Hello, in order, everybody will rise to the place.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united as, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You've already messed up the pledge.
Keep the motion off.
That's not a good sign.
There's no hog between one nation and under that. So, all right, roll call.
Uh, Councilmember Bozick, not present, uh, Councilmember Reavis.
Here.
Councilmember Conover.
Present.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
And Councilmember Witten.
I am here.
Six present.
All right, uh, first reading?
Notice the taxpayers of proposed additional appropriations. Now, this is hereby given the taxpayers of Porter County, Indiana, but the proper legal officers of Porter County will meet in the Porter County Government Administration Building located 155 Indiana Avenue of Alpeiro, Indiana on January 23rd to consider the following additional appropriations in excess of the county budgets for the year 2018 and to transact any further business which might come before the council. Local health maintenance fund 1168, data processing equipment 4,000, telephone 3,000, stormwater fund 1182, office supplies $5,000, advertising $1,500, plant commission fund 1180, telephone $5,000, surveyor perpetuation fund 1202, other equipment $45,000, local health maintenance trust tobacco fund 1206, advertising $3,000, sheriff drug task force fund 4010, FICA $733, per diem $9,600, office supplies $1,500, other supplies $2,000, auto truck and equipment $1,000, building maintenance supplies $1,000, other services $24,000, motor vehicles $10,000, inmate processing fund 4911, buildings and structures $16,000, public health preparedness, vital terrorism $8119, contractual services $70,765.50. Fund MOH IAC grant fund $8,300, contractual $240, office equipment over $109,867.35. MOH Anderson Foundation Fund $9,300, other equipment $1,898.5. Memorial Opera House, United Way, Power of Youth Fund $9301, other services $2,000. Memorial Opera House Arts Midwest $9302, other services $553. Memorial Opera House PCCD Spark $9304, contractual services $6,684.83. Taxpayers appearing at such meeting shall have a right to be heard thereon. The additional appropriations as finally made will be referred to the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance, which will make a written determination as to the sufficiency of funds to support the appropriations made within 15 days of receipt of a certified copy of the action taken. Signed Vicki Urbannick, Auditor of Porter County, published January 12, 2018, in the Chapter 10 Tribune.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a quick suggestion? I know that we have under other matters some certificates at the end of the meeting, some awards. Could we do that early on?
Absolutely. We can get to it right now. Mr. Rickert?
I'll accept that.
What's that?
Have we done the agenda? They're not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda.
Well, thank you for your question. First of all, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to thank the council for giving us, giving me this opportunity to recognize, really, three of our dispatchers for some outstanding work. This is kind of a new, uh, kind of a new, I think, opportunity for our center, but for also members of the council, members of the audience that are here tonight to be able to maybe see a little idea of some of the good work that goes on at the 911 Center. Um, I've had the opportunity to serve in law enforcement prior to this, about 31 years, the last 14 years as chief, and for that amount of time, I've really had the honor of totally to recognize several police officers for a job well done. And as Executive Director for Porter County Public Safety now, I've really, really come to appreciate more than ever the outstanding work that is performed by our 911 Center, our dispatchers, on a day-to-day basis. It's been an eye-opening experience for me, and, you know, tonight, let me just be able to share a little bit of that with all of you. Without a doubt, our dispatchers are the unsung heroes of public safety. They are the initial contact for citizens and our public safety partners when help is needed. They perform their duties mostly behind the scenes and are rarely recognized for their work, even though it is of utmost importance. What I'd like to do is just kind of read a brief description of the award that is going to be given tonight. One of our most distinguished awards, an employee may receive, is the Honorable Mention Award. This award is to be given for exemplary work by an employee, work which shows a high degree of skill and a thorough knowledge of proper procedure. This award is presented to an employee who demonstrates outstanding work in critical and stressful situations. What I'd like to do now is please just have Kara Reader step up here with me, just to share with the group, there were two other dispatchers as well that were part of this incident that could not make it this evening. Work schedule's pretty tight, but I appreciate Kara being able to be here and some other employees from the center. What I'll do now is just kind of read a brief synopsis of the incident that Kara's been recognized for tonight. In December of 2017, our dispatch center was advised of reverberating progress originating in the city of Portage. The vehicle pursuit began and continued onto Indiana Toll Road. Our dispatchers maintained contact with all the officers involved, which included the Porter Police Department and Indiana State Police. During the pursuit, dispatchers were also handling, this going on at the same time, seven additional unrelated police calls, five medical calls, which included a full cardiac arrest, and 29 additional unrelated phone calls, all going on at the same time they were ma- maintained contact with the officers involved in the pursuit. Our dispatchers worked together as a team and conducted themselves professionally during this chaotic and dangerous situation. The pursuit was eventually terminated on the toll road and resulted in the arrest of two suspects who were charged with numerous crimes. No injuries came to the officers or injuries came to any innocent bystanders. Now, if the citizens in the fire were to give some details on the incident, we most likely would have read about the officers involved in the media, you know, the newspaper or social media. Like I said, really, the dispatchers who are the initial contact may maintain contact throughout this entire incident and also have numerous other things going on aren't mentioned. So that's why tonight, for their outstanding work during this incident, it is my honor to present the Porter County 911 Honorable Mention Award to Kara Reader. Congratulations. I'd like to present this to Kara. The other dispatchers who could not be with us tonight, again, because of work demands, are Lori Maddox and Roberta Pollak. And I just want to thank the members of the council for allowing me to do this. It means a lot to us and to our employees at the center. So, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Yeah, whereas, I could just say real quick, you know, having spent a lot of years in police work and been in a lot of police pursuits, so far, I've always been the pursuer, so that's a good sign, but how those pursuits end, in tragedy or, you know, in a seamless arrest as they're supposed to, in many instances depends specifically on the kind of dispatcher that you have. They're not just your lifeline, but they're coordinating so many things going on. And I, when I look back on, on my years, there were certain dispatchers that were just really fantastic at it, could really juggle those hand grenades that were seemingly going to go off at any moment, and they just made all the difference. So, I congratulate your dispatchers on handling that the way they did. It's incredibly stressful, and people don't really realize that until they're there. And in many instances, after it's over, we look back and think, oh, my God, what I just went through. But in the moment, you're just having to rely on your training and your good sense, and so congratulations on the job.
Well, I can also add to that because several years ago, my husband collapsed on the floor, and I immediately recognized he had a stroke. From my hospital experience and as being a nurse practitioner, I dialed 911, and I'm telling you, she, the, it was a lady, the person I talked to was very, very sharp, on the ball, and I didn't even know there was a fire truck and ambulance in my driveway. And she says, well, they're there now. And, but anyway, I commend your department very much for what they do. And he's perfectly fine today.
Thanks. Mike, you're not, you don't have anything else, do you, on the agenda? I mean, do you want to present?
I'd like to introduce our new 911 director, if you'd like.
Yeah, I would like that.
Sure, thank you. Well, I appreciate this opportunity. I'd like to introduce Rob Lanchford. Rob is our new 911 director. I've had, I've known Rob for 14 years. He's retired Chief of Detectives and Logistics Supervisor for South Bend Police Department. He was an intricate part of the St. Joe County 911 consolidation. He sat on the board in St. Joe County for the 911 consolidation process, and Rob is an outstanding asset to our team. He sort of completes the final piece of our, of our team that we've been working on since I took his job in September. And again, you know, just to say, he's going to be an integral part as we move forward and really make Porter County 911 the model program for the state of Indiana. So with that, I'd like to introduce Rob, Rob Lanchford to the council and members of the audience. Thanks.
Anybody got any questions for Rob now, or you want to wait till he presents his first request?
Uh, we'll be ready for that tonight.
So, all right, thanks, Mike, and Rob, and Kara. Thank you for your service. So, all right, we'll move on. Joy, there's no minutes for approval?
I have, um, I'll make some minutes, but I thought you guys would want to do them on the foundation.
No, nope. All right, we'll move on. First request is Superior Court Judge Chister. They did contact me about this request. It's $495.95, so it's, um, for a new Rome, I did send an email and ask, asking the judge what color he'd be getting, but he never responded.
I'll move to approve.
Motion in a second. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Memorial Opera House.
I'll make a motion on, um, all of these additionals.
Second.
Motion in a second on all the additionals, and these are all, well, the first one's a grant foundation. Are these all?
Yes.
They're all.
Yes.
So what, not to jump off the track a little bit, so what's, what's coming up at the Opera House? What have we got on the agenda?
Well, we open up Hunchback of Notre Dame on the 16th of February. The night before, the 15th, we have our preview night, of course, and we also have a ribbon cutting. Uh, we will be opening the building up for its 125th anniversary to the public. We're very, very excited about all the things going on there. Uh, so again, leading out with Hunchback of Notre Dame for three weeks, Blythe Spirit is our spring show, and then Legally Blonde is our summer show. Um, if anybody has any laptops that they're looking to get rid of, we do need them for that show, we will take them. Uh, and then Sweeney Todd is our fall musical, and It's a Wonderful Life, the musical at Christmas time.
Very cool.
So, yeah.
They did have the opportunity to stop in and chat for just a moment, as you know, with the Opera House Foundation Board. It seems like they're putting some pretty cool things in place, and there's some movement for, to accent that 125th anniversary celebration, so it sounds like some good things.
Yeah, very, very exciting things happening.
Any further discussion in the motion? All right, we'll have a roll call on all, one, two, three, four, five, six. Is that six additional?
Uh-huh. Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
And Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Surveyor Perpetuation Fund, an additional $45,000 to other equipment to purchase new survey equipment.
I'll make a motion on this.
Second.
Motion in a second.
Can you tell us what's in that fund? Vicki, just out of curiosity.
Seventy-seven thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and eighteen cents, I think.
Thank you, Vicki.
Would you bring it up?
Yes.
So how much is?
Seventy-seven thousand eight fifty-six and eighteen cents.
So how much do we start? Have we used any of that this year yet?
No.
Do we have anything coming out of it regularly?
Uh, I did take out for a computer, but that's already been taken out in that amount that's read.
So we're, we're, you know, do you have anything coming up this year that, other things that you might think will need to come out of this fund, as you, as you're saying here today, you know?
Well, as this is a perpetuation fund, in conjunction with a recorder, it's refreshed on a monthly basis. So, yes, I need to replace vehicles, as explained during budget, I need to replace equipment, it's, it's really outdated.
So, but you're confident that this fund will be fed sufficient to do those things that we need to do?
Oh, yes.
Any other questions, further discussion? Uh, roll call.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
And Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Thank you. Health Department, local health maintenance.
I'll make a motion on all three of these, four of these additionals. None of them are general funds.
Second.
Motion in a second on?
Oh, no. We ain't going to vote until you guys get up. That almost looks too easy, man.
The motion in a second on all four additionals. Any discussion?
So are you guys dealing with, I'm sure, this outbreak of the flu epidemic, and there's a lot of concern and a lot of media about this? What are we seeing in Porter County?
There have been 25 deaths in Indiana, and we have had some in Porter County, and most of them have, not most of them, the, the three that we've had have been older folks with other underlying conditions, but we still do have flu vaccines. Traditionally, excuse me, the influenza time peaks in February, so if you haven't had a flu shot, you know, there's time, it takes about two weeks to develop some antibodies. It's not like to get the immunization and the immunity switch is flipped on, but you need about two weeks. So you've still got some coverage if you, especially if you have underlying medical conditions, you really should still have a flu shot if you haven't gotten one. Uh, the match is, they say, about 20 to 30 percent effective, which we, of course, like to see higher, but they always say if you have a flu shot, even with that coverage, it should help you not get a serious case. So, you know, we tell everybody, wash your hands, you know, everywhere, wash your hands. So, um, you touch anything anybody else does, or even what you, yourself does, you touch your eyes, you touch your nose, wash your hands, so.
Statistically, that number's really ignored, the flu is ignored mainly, and you don't hear about it a lot. Is that much higher in the state currently than we have been in the past?
You know, Jeff, the last three years have been really kind of a anticlimactic flu season. So people get complacent, you know, if it's not in your face, if children aren't dying, if they're not having a, an early bad, serious influenza problem, then people just don't, they're not interested in getting a flu shot. So, then when you start seeing these flu cases and children dying, you know, you've seen young, healthy, 20-year-old bodybuilder that died of the flu, a 40-year-old, I heard just last week, with three young children, a runner died from the flu. I mean, it's, it's serious.
Right.
And it can lead to, you know, some, some, and it's respiratory, you know, it's pneumonia, it's bronchitis, it's fever, it's, you're really sick, so.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion on the additionals? Roll call.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
And Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're also diligently working on the opioid problem, and we've had some things in the works that have happened over a while, so if you want to know more about that, we can tell you more.
That's good. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Stormwater management, plant commission.
I'll make a motion on the plant commission additional, as well as the two tran, the two additionals for stormwater and the transfer.
Second.
So there's a motion in a second for the additional?
And the transfer.
And the transfer.
None of this stuff's general fund, and all seems pretty straightforward.
Any discussion, any further discussion? Uh, I guess I'll, I'll ask a little bit.
John.
Huh? Can I ask?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hey, that's no way to talk to Sylvia.
I did interrupt you.
Okay.
No, she didn't interrupt. Uh, I don't know what she said, actually. So, uh, maybe with the additionals, so for office supplies, was this why?
I forgot to put it into the 2018 budget when it was approved. It was pointed out by my bookkeeper asking me if I thought we didn't need any supplies, and it's like, oops.
I thought the commissioners did all the office supplies.
Well, we don't, you know, the stormwater.
I have to purchase all my own.
Yeah. And we want it that way. Yeah. I would be more than happy to let the commissioners purchase it. Right there in the stormwater.
All right, um, any further discussion? Uh, roll call.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice spirit.
Sheriff, Sheriff Drug Task Force.
And Jeremy, I'll make a motion on all these additionals.
I'll second that.
And I did have an opportunity to chat with Sheriff Reynolds, who's out of town today, about this, and this just seems to be the, the final step to move things from the prosecutor's office over to the sheriff's department handling the drug unit. As you know, we had to make a decision last year to move that drug unit. More on that later. Uh, so this seemed to be finishing the.
Correct.
Moving of the money.
Later as in later in the meeting, or later down the road?
Who's to say?
So there's a motion in a second on the floor for the additionals? Any other discussion? Sylvia? Roll call.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Council, uh, Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
And Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Jail inmate processing fund.
We also spoke about this one. I'll make a motion on the 16,000 from building and structures equipment. This is also non-general fund money, upgrade requirement.
Motion in a second? Discussion?
Is this separate from the 911 stuff we're doing?
Yes, yeah.
Roll call.
Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Was there more discussion to be asked?
No. Oh, it was a good answer.
He said good answer. Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
And Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
Six to zero. Thank you.
Thanks. Adult probation, um, admin fees, a transfer.
Move to approve.
Good evening. $206.62 in salaries. Motion in a second on the floor?
So, a quick, a quick question. The one was here at the last, when this was up before, so, um, so this additional money, it's a higher salary. When was that decision made to increase the salary?
Uh, the original appropriation was made in October. I know when the judges originally hired our new chief, that was discussed, so the, um, original appropriation was incorrectly submitted back in October.
Okay. So I wanted to know.
I had a motion in a second, right?
Yes.
Any more discussion? It's a transfer. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign, transfer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second reading.
Oh.
That's you, Vicki.
Yes.
You're on.
Um, addition, whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than what was appropriated in the annual budget, therefore, be it ordained, resolved by the Porter County Council of Porter County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Local health maintenance, a total of $7,000. Stormwater, a total of $6,500. Plant commission, a total of $5,000. Surveyor perpetuation, $45,000. Local health maintenance trust tobacco fund, $3,000. Sheriff drug task force, a total of $49,833. Inmate processing, $16,000. Public health preparedness, a total of $70,765.50. MOH IAC grant, a total of $10,107.35. MOH Anderson Foundation, $1,898.5. Opera House, United Way, Power of Youth, $2,000. Memorial Opera House Arts Midwest, $553. And Memorial Opera House, PCCD Spark, $6,684.83. And that concludes second reading.
Move to approve, second reading.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Conover.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Justin.
Yes.
Councilmember Larson.
Yes.
And Councilmember Witten.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Attorneys report.
There is nothing to report today, simple EGD.
Dan, you usually say what about there?
No, so the, um, so the, we've heard nothing more. I know you gave us a report on the trailing liabilities for the hospital. Nothing's changed on that, right?
Nothing has changed on that from, uh, the last I spoke with both outside counsel on that, the cases were still pending. It looked like there was positively that it wouldn't impact the fund, at least at this stage.
So maybe before our March meeting, maybe you could get us a little bit of a?
Sure.
If there's any, been any changes?
Sure.
I'm curious, because that's a little bit of money there?
Yep. Thanks.
Nothing else?
Nothing else. Yeah.
All right, and any questions for Attorney Harper?
Welcome to another year.
Thank you.
My condolences.
All right, um, any other matters come properly for the council?
Election board.
Election board presentation.
Now for the moment, we've all been waiting for.
We're raised to everything else, I get right here.
We appreciate you, too.
I'm the sidekick, Vice President. All right. Well, we're back in front of you all again. We had our election board meeting today to continue on with our process of looking at new election equipment, as well as looking at consolidation to make that election usable, to replace the current process of using a paper ballot. Uh, the election board was, we approved those measures. Along with that, we're, we are going to take some measure, or some assistance in this Along with that, we are going to take some measure, or some assistance in this transition if it's approved by the county council and the commissioners, if it's allowed to proceed that we actually do make the purchase, along with that, we're going to also set aside funds to do an informational blitz to kind of help with that transition, doing PSAs, advertisements, mailers, that sort of thing, to help assist the voters, as well as websites and using the county website and so forth. Try to make the transition as simple as possible. The consolidated list that we, that was put together by voter registration, made every effort to keep the locations close to the existing ones, so it's not going to be a matter of, you know, somebody moving a great distance or something like that. So, you know, every effort we've been, we've tried to make it as smooth, efficient, as painless as possible. And I think that's been evidenced by as many times we've been in front of your board, you know, just presenting, asking for requests, sometimes not even asking, just doing updates. And I think this is kind of, we're in that same situation at this process, or this step in the process. The funds to, to start the purchase of the equipment have been encumbered by the commissioners, but the county councils, you know, you have to pay for it in the future financing and it's not, it's not a one-time.
Actually, I think it's not encumbered by the council, isn't that the money that we set aside?
It was encumbered by the commissioners.
No, the commissioners created the ordinance to create the rainy day fund. We.
Yeah, we encumbered.
We encumbered the money.
Okay. So it was encumbered by you.
Educational purposes.
But the commissioners is, I was confused as to how they.
That's okay.
They request that, so, but, but those funds are, again, that's what they were encumbered for, was to hope that we would be able to do the equipment purchase, so.
And I know, Dave, we've talked a couple of times in the past on at least the financing aspect of things. The original financial proposal that you'd come to us with was early on and it had some interest rate in there that caused me some, at least a moment of pause, and it made me want to go back and talk with the commissioners about some alternate options we might have for funding it. And I know that you've met with finance institutions, I think it's Horizon, but I'm not sure. So is, can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, the financing initially that was offered was through the SNS, who's the provider of the equipment. They offered the financing at five, a little over 5%. We did seek other private financing to help try to reduce that interest cost and make it a little more flexible for the county. We reached out to First Source Bank, who did provide a proposal, but ultimately Horizon was the bank of choice. They, their offering financing at seven years at 2.4%. Okay, so it's less, it's less than half of what the vendor was offering on the, you know, for the equipment itself.
Yeah, my concern obviously, as we talked about, was, you know, if we're, depending on where we're pulling money from to do this, if the road leads us to using investment funds, then obviously the question is, how are we doing on our, you know, earnings compared to what does the financing look like at 2.9% financing? I mean, that's pretty, that's pretty good.
That's pretty good, yeah. I, we couldn't get anything closer than that, or lower than that, I should say, even close.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Basically, what they would do, based on the set aside for the, for the informational campaign out of the original encumbered funds, that's what, we're going to, the remaining funds from that encumbered amount will be basically the down payment on the equipment and then the rest is what actually gets financed. If we do it over seven years, it's a 2.4%, we're looking at estimated payment about $221,789 to $224,927, depending on the cost, okay? So that's what the financed amount would be. That first payment would be a year from when we actually closed, which would be approximately February of 19, somewhere in that range, so.
Seven years, the estimated life of those usable?
The estimated life is 10 to 15.
Okay. Where's the plan to store, to store the equipment?
It'll be stored here, in this building. It's not going to be in the outsourced, in the outside storage, if you're familiar, in the parking garage, it's not going to be there.
So it's going to be in a climate-controlled.
Yeah, that's the intent. We're hopefully, because we're trading in a lot of the older equipment, so we're going to use that, the space that that was occupying to store the new equipment.
And the commissioners are aware of that as they're planning their assessment of the building and.
Correct.
Building needs.
Okay.
Now, I have some concern that, there's been things posted on today on the Facebook, which is not totally reliable, as we all know, but comments saying that there has been errors with our previous equipment. And I took, I'd like to have Kathy, is she here? If she, can you, can you clarify exactly what you were talking about? The state of Indiana, have they said that our races have been good?
I didn't see the postings, Sylvia. But every year that we use that equipment, it fails us. An election morning week, you have nowhere, somewhere here about 10 machines go down. So if you're uploading, you're on thermal printers right now, like a cash register receipt. They operate on batteries like, that would go into like a hearing meeting. Those batteries go down. Hey, we do have the email that you sent about what it would cost, just to kind of keep us going with the old equipment.
Yeah, the new, the new service cost would be $191,000 to service our current inventory of the M100 scanners that we have right now.
And that's an estimate. We won't know until we start working on the equipment. We might need new printers, we might need new batteries. Being down in the room that they've been kept in certainly hasn't been good. I don't know if any of you have been to a precinct, that got there, the machine's not working, it's missing time anywhere or so forth. Do you have an auxiliary bin that you can put that ballot in until I can get a representative out there to get the machine up and going? Oftentimes, he can't. So we've learned from in the past to put two or three in a spot car and swap them out.
I think Sylvia's concern was, and we've mentioned before in other council meetings where we thought it was upwards of 1 to 1.5% error in the overall system, is that accurate?
I don't believe so. I don't think it's been that high. There's any type of an error.
Well, that's where the numbers are coming from, so I, I think the numbers seem a little drastic.
I did too, and that's why I wanted that mentioned tonight, because I want to, the people to know that our elections have been certified by the state.
Absolutely.
And we've not had, we have some minor problems from what you're talking about, but they have been handled and handled in a correct manner.
And it wasn't so big that we, they changed the elections. I mean, so Sylvia Graham really, really, really did beat me.
Which time are we talking about?
Every time. All right, good, good.
And one thing too, and one thing too about the, the new equipment, and I know I don't know if everybody, everybody's looked at the demo model that's down in voter registration office, but it is a touchscreen electronic, you know, choice system, but it does print out a paper ballot. So there's still going to be a paper audit, similar, and we use a scanning device similar to the M100s we currently have, that that actually gets fed. So that's where there is the audit feature of the electronic machine plus the scanner of the, of the actual paper receipt are going to balance. So that's, you're going to have a little, I think it's going to be more efficient, it's much quicker, I think, for them. They're handicap accessible compared to the coloring in the circles, which has its limitations. So, I mean, you do have some advantages of the newer equipment just from that standpoint, but there's also the efficiency of, in case of an audit, the counting process is going to be obviously much more, much quicker than the manual process that we've been doing before. But then also you still have that manual feature of an audit where you could actually take the paper ballots and do a manual count.
So does this eliminate, does this eliminate the, and we've heard countless times, actually, in this and other venues, that there is a degree of human error from workers at the polls, that ballots weren't carried over, that they were put in drawers, or that they were in somebody's briefcase and all that kind of crap. So does this eliminate that potential?
Yes, I mean, you're not going to be carrying around the manual ballots. We also have a central tabulator.
Unless all of that that I just said is not true.
That's not true.
If all of that that's been said is untrue, then my question is rhetorical.
When you come, when you come to, when you're manually penciling in, counting signatures and you're literally counting by finger count, I mean, there is going to be human error. So I can't say 100% that everything is perfect.
Well, how will this affect our early voting? And also, I wanted to make sure, because there was a question about the amount of polling places and we reduced those. I know the hold costs down on, on the amount of books.
The consolidation, yes.
Right. So everyone in the voting office is in agreement that that was something that was, something you guys all sought and everyone there, now we're not going to get this stuff taken care of and then we're going to find out later that half of us didn't agree that polling locations should have been changed.
What you have, I think appended to the presentation, the last three to four pages, is a list of the current working, approximately 46, proposed and approved by the election board, downsized voting sites. Nothing's written in gold, we no sooner got to that stage, to answer your question, than we found out the Portage Adult Center decided they're not going to be open on election day.
Well, you can see where I'm going with this.
Sure.
We're going to fund this and the commissioners are going to vote on it and it's going to look like we've reduced the polling locations. So I want to make sure that that's clearly stated, that we have nothing to do with reducing the amount of polling locations on either side of the, of the bench. And I also wanted to make sure that the commissioners understood that when they were getting sent this document, they had nothing to do with reducing the amount of polling locations. It was strictly a decision made on the locations themselves and the amount of use that they were getting.
What, what role do the commissioners play in voting locations? Because it seems like you guys have gone to them, and I'm just going off memory, hey, this new, we're going to have a polling location here and not here. Have they had to vote on those locations?
They have to approve the final list.
All right, so they do.
The election board, we decide.
But we don't have to approve the final list.
You do not.
Okay.
But you do have to fund it, so that's, that's what's important here.
You've done a tremendous job shopping for financing, that's an incredible break.
I would like to also ask a question about the, this new counter that you have. It's phenomenal, I mean, what does it count? 3,000 in a minute or, it's an unbelievable amount.
The central tabulator.
Yes, and I've been told that you weren't going to start the counting until 3 o'clock or something on the, on the election day.
Of the absentees.
Of the absentees, that's what they're counting.
We haven't decided the exact time that we will decide to start counting. What it does for us is to move up the time, allow us some accuracy, because prior to this, we use lunch bags to put the absentee votes in a lunch bag and drive them around with county sheriffs to the location.
Right.
That was ripe for error. There was too much handling and cross-handling so that busy poll workers might not know what to do with a ballot that was in the wrong precinct at the wrong time that got delivered as an absentee. I think we will move up the time. We're trying to figure out right now as a board what is fair to both, both parties overall.
It's going to be determined on the volume too, how many there are.
So a quick, quick question. So I know that right now, how many machines do we have? How many voting machines do we have right now? Old machines?
Old ones?
It's a real simple question. Simple math.
Oh, yeah, 102.
140.
140.
So we're proposing to purchase 140 as well, so we're not going down on any machines? Is that correct?
The amount of questions that we put in for, everybody's under the misconception it's because of consolidation.
Right.
It's not. If we have 1,000 people voting in this room and I'm proposing to put 2,000, I still need to put up 2,000.
It's geared to the proposed population that's going to vote, it's not geared to the voting site. So I actually have a few more machines. I see on this quantity 140 refurbished, that's my second question. Machines, 735,000. I'm just going through this, and honestly, I haven't had time to digest this. I haven't had time to review it, I haven't had time to consider all the numbers, I haven't had time to look at the consolidation, because even though we don't vote on this, I have a great deal of interest in how it affects our voters, you know, in ease and access to the polls, so I'm very interested in all that stuff. I have not had time to review it. But as I'm looking at this now, a couple of things are jumping out. So when, when we say refurbished, is that saying we're not buying new stuff?
No. I think the part that you're, you're reading is the refurbished are what would be the situation, that they're buying those back from us.
No, it says the 140 refurbished model DS200s for $735,000. It's showing that these, these precinct scanners that the ballots go in are refurbished.
They were used in one election.
There you go, sorry. So we know why they're not, so why aren't they, so somebody had them, used them in an election and doesn't want them anymore?
Well, it was like a mock election.
And they're, and these are, remember, these are paper scanners, they're not, it's not the.
I understand, yeah.
So they had a trial run?
Yeah.
Okay.
And one thing else.
So why are they refurbished?
Because they've been used. They've used it one time, so you can't say they're brand new coming out of the box. And one thing also too, they add on, since you mentioned the consolidation, you always say used, used sounds terrible. You should know that, attorney, come on. But the, in regards to the consolidation as well, because we are consolidating the number of locations on election day, early vote sites was actually expanded. So we've gone from three to now we're going to, we're going to offer five.
One in Hebron, one in Chesterton, one in Portage, one in, where's the other one?
In Union Township. So we'll have five early vote locations and the early vote sites are the ones that are actually, the turnout's going up every election. That's where you're getting here.
Along the train of thought, are we going to have more poll workers in those locations? Are we eliminating some positions? Is this going to make the operation of that, those remote locations easier so we're not going to need as much personnel? I mean, because that's what.
What if elections are like, ready?
Okay, but I'm just asking, because that's another $150 per person or whatever for that day, right?
It is our fault that we will be able to cut that.
Okay.
But in these first couple.
The first one.
Right.
Yeah, we don't have dedicated voters. Yeah, we just.
Right, no, I, I'm just saying in the long haul, we're looking at probably reducing some of those numbers.
By election day, I hired 12 sheriffs to deliver.
Right.
They're running five an hour. We can cut that back to six.
Right. That's, that's kind of where I was going with it, you guys are going to.
So if one thing will offset.
Right, right.
Yeah, and honestly, I mean, the fact of the matter is, we're probably not going to cut people, but we just need to make sure that the people that are there, and at 150 bucks a pop, it's probably not a huge price to pay to, to make sure that people have access and have explanation.
Well, what is allowed? Did you not say that to service our current machines for this year would be about $191,000?
Right.
Now, we've put away, we've squirreled away and encumbered this money for our down payment and the subsequent payments are going to be 225,000.
Correct.
And it costs us a little under $200,000 a year to bring our current machinery up. Well, it's a no-brainer.
But along those lines though, what, what is our annual fees with this new stuff? I mean, I, I'm just glancing through here, so I know I go to this next page and it looks like annual, well, just post warranty and maintenance support fees, $120,000. And then it's like I keep going down and it doesn't stop. There's ballot encoding for 17,000, poll data conversion, six, additional pricing, you know, 1,400, 4,000.
Some of those things, though, you have to take consideration of lottery too.
Yeah, we, we're paying licensing now.
Yeah, but the 120,000.
I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, those are the election services, are they going to?
Still services that we use currently.
And we're going to, that we're going to have to pay that.
Every year, we have a service.
Okay, so what's our cost annually outside of the $221,000 for this new equipment?
For the service of the current charge.
And their support? That would be my concern, now we're going to go to these touchscreens, are they going to have available people? Are we going to have IT people that are going to be roving around if one of these things lock up, freeze on us?
Well, we have the same thing with our current machines, but they'll have their Well, they'll have their personnel available to service it if there's something wrong. They also make, do the maintenance and repair, keep it ready to go. Basically, do it through the same process.
So a little bit, a little bit of concern, and, you know, folks have been on the council for a while, is that you may, if we could take a virtual trip back in time to the e-poll books. We got, you know, the purchase of the e-poll books. After that, we were getting comments made that the Wi-Fi wasn't working, that the e-poll books were functioning, that people were being turned away at the polls. Again, maybe that's not, maybe that's not true, but at least it causes us some concern or at least a reason to ask the question that if we had that kind of, just an e-poll book implementation, you know, interpolation in the process, what's this going to do?
Well, and that's, that's where the consolidation came in, is reducing the number of locations so that we can hardwire as many of those locations we possibly can, putting them in school, public buildings, so that we were not doing, going through that same situation we do with the e-poll books where we're trying to grab a Wi-Fi signal and maybe in a park or, or a remote location where they're not getting a good reception. This is going to be a hardwired situation where it's a direct line. So the internet's going to be available. That's what those locations are being vetted for.
So are the, the purchase of the new equipment, is that tethered to the consolidation? Meaning if we don't purchase the new equipment, there's no consolidation?
Correct.
Or if there's no consolidation, the request for new equipment is no longer-
Correct, tied together.
Correct?
They are.
So my only concern is, I, and we've talked a lot, and I, and I think in spirit we agree that it's probably not a bad idea to move into new equipment. We all like to have new technology to keep up the times, to change the needs and requirements of our constituency, but I don't think any of us have, have had any time to consider the consolidated voting spots. And I, and I, I want to. I'm not, I, I think we need new equipment, but I think I need to be comfortable with the consolidation.
Now, to, to, to that point, if I could, Dan, just for my clarification, currently there are how many voting locations?
Eighty.
And is the, the-
Forty-six.
Almost final number, forty-six?
Eighty-four.
And as we look at those, it looks like, based on the list, um, it looks like there's a significant reliance on the schools. And if that's the case, have we had discussions with the schools and are they in agreement? I, I look at Union Township very selfishly, um, and it's taken it to Wheeler High School, and it appears based on this list that it's all precincts would go to Wheeler High School, which would be a significant number of people. Are they going to be closed that day or have we had those discussions?
We spoke with all the superintendents for the schools. Portage, for example, for the first time, they're actually going to close for us. So that's going to, they're going to make an e-learning day out of that. So that's actually going to, I think that was our biggest issue prior to the Portage auditorium at the high school, was trying to get the voting equipment set up there. So since they're going to do an e-learning day, they're actually going to make it better for us, no matter what equipment we use.
And I think Valpo's already been in the ground with us.
Valpo's already going to close.
What about the other?
They still have ongoing construction. Chesterton, they don't see it as an issue, so they're not going to, they're not going to close. They, they're still separated enough. I think we only have two of their locations. But Union Township, in, to go back to your point, Union Township was one that they said, no, it's not an issue. They keep it separated from the, the general school population, so they didn't feel it was necessary to close it.
Even if school was in session?
Even if they're going to have school in session.
That was, that was a question that I think Mike and I discussed earlier when we were talking about these, and it's always been a question of school safety. I know that has to be addressed by the superintendents, but we've, I've always felt, coming with the schools, my background, it was kind of dangerous bringing the general population into those schools. And there really isn't any way in a lot of those buildings to isolate the general population and some of the school students. And even though the schools don't seem to, to think that's an issue, it really is. We've got a rope there that barricades people from going into the rest of the building.
And that's what we had presented to them before this all came up last year, is to, as we were kind of coming to this proposal, and we, we told them, hey, if we're going to do something like this where we're consolidating, using those schools as your location where you have a larger volume of voters, we were hoping that they would just close. And some did, like I said, Portage did and Valpo, but the other schools felt that there, there's no issue.
I'd like to go back to answer my question, the, the annual cost.
Yes. And the annual, and the annual cost is in the agreement.
Yeah, I mean, and going through all this, the little, small, soft cost, what, do we know? Do we have a rough estimate of what this is going to cost annually to maintain?
Totally.
I mean, I know there's a hundred and twenty, but there's other little things in here. And I get that we pay it now, but what, what's this going to be?
Right, and they have the maintenance fees laid out in the agreement, and it's got the fifty thousand on the, on the hardware, on the scanners, the terminals. That's what they're, they're looking at. And then you have their service cost, which is the, laid out on the second page, is when you get the license and the maintenance. Okay? So that's where they've got it separated out per year, and it's if you find, I think it's pages six, eight, nine.
And then based on the review or analysis of that, we're saying that's very similar to what we've been paying for service and maintenance after we've purchased the equipment.
Yeah, because we're already paying the service cost. And as you can tell on the, on the older equipment, it's going up because we're replacing the batteries on those older scanners. And that seems to be what we're replacing the most of, is the battery packs and the data cards.
Basically, something I really like about it, and I did go down and, and review the equipment. I like the idea that there's a photo that matches with the person that's voting, plus your, when you swipe your card to, you know, register, as well as a card. So you're still getting, you're going to have a tremendous background.
How long that Jeremy's at? I mean, I'm looking at that maintenance agreement. It says once every twenty-four months, but, I mean, we're paying fifty-eight plus forty, ninety-eight, over a hundred thousand dollars to maintain those, basically, because they're, it looks like we're going to maintenance once every twenty-four months. We're paying annually for those maintenance fees, but they're accruing to well over a hundred grand before they maintain the machinery.
Yeah, they call the maintenance fees, the ballot encoding, that all they have.
Well, they've got firmware and everything else separate on those fees. I mean, there's another thirty thousand dollars annually for all of that. So when we're looking at the, I, I'm sure this is just pure maintenance of the equipment, it's a hundred grand every two years that we're going to pay on just maintaining the equipment.
And we're getting more equipment. I question them on that. We're getting more equipment.
That just seems like an extremely high fee.
Yeah, I don't know that. I mean, we can, listen, guys, I mean, we've heard, we've heard this is going to be a cost savings. I, I have my doubts. I think that probably we shouldn't look at it that way because it probably isn't. I think the stronger thought for us is to consider whether we need new stuff and if stuff we have now is worth trying to duct tape together or do we need to move to something a little more state-of-the-art? And I, on the back end of that, I mean, I've heard a lot that we've had some difficulty in getting folks to work the polls that are, I don't want to paraphrase, but that are difficult to train. And so my question is, is this new equipment going to be easier for those folks? Are we hoping to find new folks? Are we going to, are we hoping to do a better job training or what, what's going on with that?
Well, your, your polling workers, that, that pool changes, you know, over time.
Right.
But the-
Yeah, but the message we hear never does.
But the difference I think you're going to see is, remember, the, the old, what we did two years ago with the paper, you know, registration books and the hand signing and so forth, we had people signing on the wrong line and so forth. That's not going to happen with the, with the electronic poll book, just like we did when we did, we ran that for the municipal year. There was an improvement and poll workers liked it for that very fact. It was easy, they showed they could scan it, and boom, you're not, they're not going through the pages and pointing to a spot and then somebody may not be able to see it or they can't reach it because they're limited, you know, maybe they're in a wheelchair or something like that, and they may sign in the wrong line. So I mean, it does prevent a lot of the human error, the, the things that, just to sign on this signature line may not sound like a big deal to you and me, but to somebody who's way over there and trying to get to this table, that is a big deal. And so being able to just hold their license up to a scanner and now it's done and we have the right person and they get the right ballot, that's a lot easier than trying to have them reach over and try and assign this.
Or they can get the right ballot, especially if they want-
Exactly. And you know, I remember-
That's where the human error comes in.
And then we're, and that's where there is going to be some savings because before, with the paper issue, we had to pre-print those ballots so we don't run short.
Right. And then yet so we did sometimes.
Correct, and this is a blank ballot. I mean, these are just paper stock. So we can keep using them, even if we have a hundred thousand extra ballots this election, we can just use them the next one. It's not like they're going to get tossed or recycled and we have to repurchase those. So we will save some funds just on the purchasing of those paper ballots.
Along that savings, and I was on the other side of the table, but on this side, are we, are we looking at the current machines? If we don't trade those in this year, is there another depreciation loss we're going to suffer? I mean, because there's a current value on those machines as trading now, so is there going to be an additional loss?
Right, the trade-in is based on if they have buyers or are accepting equipment that they're taking in on trade.
Okay.
So, so that was-
Do you guys know what, what the depreciation is yearly or is it a huge number?
We bought this in two thousand and five, correct. So I mean, that's the age of our current scanners that we have, so. So they've already met their life.
So Dave, as a, as we look at the consolidations, consolidation of the voting set, the voting locations, um, I've always struggled with locations and where they were put, and I've asked that question in the past. In Porter Township, for instance, five hundred west, there's a church. And then you go half a mile down, it's the Boon Grove High School, and on the corner of that property is Administration Center, and those are three different voting locations, which to me never made any sense. And I had asked that question previously, not of you folks, but I've asked the question, how in the world is that possible? Does that make any sense to anyone when it's literally on the same property, but two separate voting sites? And the, uh, the point that I've heard or the answer to that question historically has been, uh, it's a legal issue, there's requirements in terms of how many people can vote at certain locations, and that's why you'd have a voting location right across the street from another voting location.
Correct.
And it appears with this, we're obviously not following that same premise. So has the law changed or was our interpretation of it previously wrong or?
Well, we're not, we're not, we're not changing that. We're still, we still have a machine per precinct. We're consolidating the location. So the precincts are-
And that's perfectly within the scope and-
Yes.
It's something that quite frankly could have been done-
Correct. What you're talking about is if we wanted to get rid of, like Ryvo, at the high school, you go across the street to the church, there's another one. You go up the street to the next corner, there's another one there.
Seems ridiculous.
You go down to the dinner hall, there's another one, there's another one church. So within four blocks, you have seven locations. So in that case, if we wanted to put those all into a single voting center where you can reduce the number of equipment and so forth, now you're talking about vote centers.
Gotcha.
So when we look at this-
It's really based on equipment that's needed at a particular location.
Well, but this equipment could do that.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's why we're, we're using the same equipment for early voting, which early voting is basically a vote center because you can go to any early vote site and you can place your vote. So by, that's why we increased it to five, because that's where the, we're seeing the increase in turnout. It's in the early voting.
Which is a tremendous component of this program, frankly, to have five.
So on this, on this, if I just, as I look at this later, I'm sure I understand it. So the, what are, what are these numbers? Are these-
Those are voters.
In what election?
That's current voters.
Registered voters.
Correct.
So I'd like to know, just out of curiosity, what percentage voter turnout in those precincts are by election? I'd like to go back a-
Mostly, it's thirty-some percent.
Yeah, that's great, but I'd like to go back a few elections and kind of know, as we're consolid-
Like my approach.
Yeah, because I'm going to, I mean, you could even get me precinct by precinct.
Maybe you can go back, but the voters have increased.
Okay, I'd like to look at the last few elections. I'm going to stick with my thought pattern here. And then I'm going to, because I want to kind of overlap that on where they currently are voting and where we're putting them. And again, I know the commissioners have kind of taken a hands-off on this, and I, and I appreciate that because they don't really want to get involved in the minutia of the consolidation. And candidly, it's probably because they're thinking if it goes bad, they don't want to be part of it. I've got to be honest with you. I mean, I don't know that for a fact, but that's my guess. They're not typically the hands-off type.
But we're definitely putting Dan with it.
Yeah, right, yes. So I just kind of want to do a little due diligence on that. Not that I have a vote on this, not that you guys have to do what I ask you to do, not that you, I have any oversight of you other than your budget, but I just want to make sure in my mind that it makes sense to me. And that's all. So as we're looking at, I mean, we're pulling some, we're really carving these down, and I've said from the very beginning, years ago, when voter consolidation, I was getting the calls from folks downstate, oh my gosh, you can't let them do voter consolidation, it's going to be terrible for the Republican Party, and then the next year I get a call, oh my gosh, it's going to kill the Democratic Party, and I just don't care. Quite frankly, it's a question of what makes sense to our voters, what makes sense in Porter County, and does our consolidation, is it reasonable?
I think we've got to confuse them. Vote centers are different than vote centers.
I'm not talking about vote centers. I'm talking about consolidated voting, all right? And if you don't think that that is a hot ticket for Tom to downstate, have a shot, have a shot down I-65 and ask him around Indy because it is a hot ticket item. So I, I don't care about any of that stuff. The fact of the matter is, and I've said from the very beginning, if what we're doing makes sense, I'm all for it. If it, if it's good for our voters, it doesn't harm our voters, it doesn't cost us a ton more to do it, I mean, it, I'm fine with that. And I just want to make sure that it makes sense.
Yeah, I wouldn't compare us to Marion County.
No, I wouldn't compare us to Marion County, but I'm saying that that seems to be an issue at the State House.
But I mean, for them, just an example, they have one early vote site for a county that size, and they have lines around the corner, and that's why they have lawsuits against their county.
Right. I love, I mean, I love the early voting sets. I think it's a great idea.
So, I mean, we're taking kind of the opposite view of-
Anything to make it more accessible for us.
Exactly. We're adding more early vote sites, knowing that that's where we're getting the turnout.
So I think what I'm hearing, maybe from a few council members, is, you know, looking at this, and again, this isn't our job, but looking at some of the precincts where you have, you proposed to put almost, you know, five thousand voters at adult and portage, but you have, in the, Portage one, you have six hundred and twenty voters. I mean, what, what is your methodology of, of how are you guys doing this consolidation? Is it, is it a number of voters in a certain area and you're trying to find a central location? Are we just kind of getting in a room and throwing darts around and seeing how we can consolidate? I mean, is there a true, you know, methodology of how you guys are consolidating these? And are the numbers going to be consistent? Because, I mean, what you have right now isn't consistent, just what I'm glancing, four thousand, one thousand, four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight, one thousand, two thousand, nine hundred, you know? What, is there a consistent process that you guys are?
And we have, and we have this question, too. I mean, one of the problems with consolidation, or if you want to take a step further if we ever want to vote centers, is you have to have a building that's-
Let's go talk about vote centers.
Okay, but I mean, it's very similar because if you're going to increase voters to one location, you have to have parking, you've got to have your ADA compliance to get them in the door, as well as you've got to look at, on our standpoint, you've got to have a willing participant as a, as a polling location. So which, what we did look at is you're looking at your public buildings, so we're not paying rent, you're looking at your schools, larger parking lots, their ADA compliance, the fire department, same thing, because they, again, they're, they're offering everything we need. So that's where you, when you're seeing your consolidation, it's availability of a building, building, it's not necessarily a, we just picked it. That's not what happens.
And so here's the thing. So the question, in my mind, I can't get past that, and I know, Karen, you said it's about 30% across the board. That's not necessarily accurate. There are certain precincts that vote before. They just-
You want the precincts that are tall.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say, you know? Because I, yeah, because some are just really not great turnout, and I get it, you know? Maybe it's the transients, you know, maybe it's a lot of apartment complexes and people aren't staying, and I don't know, all those things that sort of happen in life. I just want to make sure that the numbers, we might have some high-registered voters there, but they moved, you know, you know how that goes. So, I just kind of want to look at the last, so yeah, like precincts, I kind of want to see how we're doing. Yeah. All right.
And so I'm clear on just the procedure of this. The election board would fine-tune or finalize this consolidated list, confirm the voting locations are good, and the schools are fine, and then that presentation or that recommendation would then go before the commissioners, and the commissioners make the final stamp of approval of the new consolidated location. Just procedurally, is that the way it works?
They have to approve all locations, yes.
Yeah, they have to approve all the locations. We have to get the commissioners' approval, of course, to be able to sign the contract.
Right.
And then come back to you to get, release the funds.
Right.
How many years should we do it then? Can I start a report?
Just back a few elections.
About sixteen or fourteen?
Yeah, that'd be good. That kind of gets us one-off year, everyone. I mean, the years I'm on the ballot, but I'm not going to do it. I don't want to skew it.
And this question would be, Dan, is that gonna be this year?
So-
I didn't hear you say it.
Yeah, you haven't. So-
Maybe you guys were talking about two hundred-
I'm moving to Portage and running for council.
Mayor? Pretty sure that'll be open, Karen. I mean, $221,000 annually, we're gonna have to find, if this is the way we're going, we're gonna have to find it in the budget somewhere, starting next year?
May we have to address it at budget time?
I mean, we've always had, yeah, that's right. And we're gonna have to, if we go in this direction, it's a budget issue, and, which is what brought me to my question with Dave before, with the interest rate that we might be paying in a financing agreement, and how that compares to what we're doing in our investments, et cetera, et cetera. See whichever process, whichever path, because if we had the money to pay it all, we could just pay it all on a money that we've got invested, we're gonna lose money if we're doing that, because we're making more on that money than it would cost us to do this financing. That was kind of my thought pattern with that.
Yeah, 2.4, I don't think we're gonna do that.
When you told me that, that changed that direction a bit.
Well, I just wanted to add, I know a tremendous amount of work and study has been gone into it, in the voter department, with our county chairs, and with our election board, a tremendous amount, which is not a fly-by-your-seat. And I don't care what's trolling out on social media, I know our numbers weren't what was being reported today, so.
You mean Facebook isn't the best source of information in this? Because I quit Watson, like, go to Facebook for all my information.
It's gotta be the truth, right?
Gotcha.
Not.
So is there any further discussion?
Do you need a straw poll vote, or is this just the presentation? Now you go to the commissioners and you come back?
Well, we gotta go to the commissioners. Everything, again, is gonna be subject to, you gotta release the funds. I mean, eventually, you're gonna have to allow them to do that.
So when is that? You said not for a year?
No.
No, no, no. You have to, ours is funded or encumbered.
You need that first $500,000?
And we encumber, as you may recall, our organs made it subject to the appropriation process, so we still have to-
So the commissioners, yeah, it'll be all subject to releasing of the funds, so we still have to-
When will the machines be used, this coming primary?
Absolutely. Data service, the other one. I think the commissioners were looking for, if the council was gonna go in that direction, a straw poll or a vote in support or in opposition one way or the other. I mean, the-
Right. Well, I'm, oh, I don't want to take away this.
I think it's, there's a, correct me if I'm wrong, but a general consensus, one, that we need new equipment. I mean, the equipment we have is old and problematic, and also gonna be costly if, in fact, we're gonna use it again for this particular year. Now, there's no doubt some details that have to be worked out, and some things that need to be finalized, you know, to get to the point of actually securing the deal or purchasing the new equipment that ties into the consolidation, and ties into the voting centers and all those things. But I, I'm not hearing anybody clamoring to say we should hang on to the old equipment and use them in this election.
Listen, if we were just, if we were just talking about upgrading our equipment, buying new equipment, that would be one thing. And I think you're correct, Mike. I think that, at least in conversations past, we all kind of recognized that we need to move to new equipment. My question's always been, how many voting locations are we gonna have? How much equipment are we gonna need? How are those numbers gonna look? That sort of thing. But when it got tied specifically to the consolidation of the voting spots, that took the thought process a little bit wider for us. If, in fact, the new, I'm okay with purchasing new equipment, but what I don't want to have happen is we purchase new equipment, and we say, we give this weird nod, straw poll, which I'm not sure what you call that in municipal law, and somehow that triggers a magic vote or contract signing with the commissioners. That's fine, I mean, what do we care? But the problem then becomes, what if the net result of that then is that the revised precinct, you know, consolidated voting centers falls apart, or, you know, it doesn't make sense to us, or, I mean, I don't know. I mean, they're tying them so closely together, I guess I'd want to be clear on both issues. Unless you untie them, unless you're telling us, we don't care if there's vote centers or not, or, sorry, consolidated voting locations or not. Yeah, Karen got me. The, we want the equipment, and we want you to do it, and we're all on board, no matter what happens with the consolidated voting centers, then that's a different discussion.
Well, now, the consolidation has already been voted on. The board, our board-
So is this the list? Is this the final list?
So, other than what Portage Education-
When you took the vote earlier tonight, it was not a fight for consolidation. Sunday night, I need to go out and look at these places now. We just heard last night, I did, about the adult ed. You know, we don't know there's problems at these voting locations until the poll workers tell us. Sunday night, we have not started the process, because we didn't know if we're getting new equipment. But when they took their vote, it was not a vote based on that we can consolidate everything. It's what Sunday and I would work out.
So my question, why are they tied together? What, is there some, is there some reason, or is it just that there are parties involved, and things get done this way, and I get it, that really want both, so we either get both or we get neither? Or is there some justiciable reason why they have to be tied together?
The hope is, after we get past the first election year and get some experience on the belt, that's gonna give us our opportunity to reduce possible labor, the number of workers, because we have, the number of locations have shrunk. But again, as part of the learning curve, I'm not gonna commit to that in the first year. But that's the hope, is as we get better trained with the equipment, that it's gonna allow us to do that. Because that is, that is one of our challenges each election, is getting enough voters.
And I think it's clear, and I want to make sure that I understand it completely, because we talked about the consolidated voting locations, and we said the election board has voted on it?
Earlier, they voted on it.
But that's not final, and it's all contingent upon the commissioners' approval.
And we got Sunday and I were able to-
Gotcha, oh, yeah, right. And so I think, to answer some of the question, is that the commissioners, obviously, are gonna have to, I would assume that they would want answers to the questions that they might have before they sign the contract, before we talk about future financing for the big purchase, we're obviously gonna have questions that are gonna have to be satisfied and answered. And so there will be a time to get those questions answered, in preparation for, you know, a final vote or final direction on it.
So you still have to come back in front of us?
Correct.
So let's assume that happened in February, if that's the direction we all followed. Is that enough time to get the consolidated voting locations in place and the voters educated? Is that enough time?
Well, if we don't get the voters educated, we wouldn't do that until we know where, you know, we're gonna-
Forget about the equipment. Joe, you're voting over here, you're not voting over here, you've voted for 25 years. Is that enough time to get it?
Yes, we have enough time to-
I don't care what kind of equipment you're using, I want to know, do we have enough time to educate the voters on their different voting locations? That's what I want to know.
There will be enough time.
I mean, are we, and so what I'm saying is, if we, if the timeline I'm just laying out is correct, and we, so we get this, you know, approved, if that's the direction we go in February, Kathy and Sunday have to go out and vet these, this list of locations, and somehow I-
But we don't wait till February to do that.
Yeah, and so, what's the timeline on that? And then if we get the, if we get the funding approved or the appropriation approved in February, have you already ordered the equipment by then? So if, with all of that stuff in place, what if, you know, will there be enough time to educate the voters on their new voting locations prior to May? Are we confident about that? That seems like a real tight timeline. No.
Well, I don't think that's a correct answer from the Democratic standpoint. I think what they've done is to set aside in their budget $30,000 to hopefully find a way to educate the voters.
Right.
But the burden is going to rest on the precinct committee people, the burden is gonna rest on people who live in that block, burden is going to rest on politicians. This will not be easy. It's change, and there's no guarantees. We're just doing the best we can to, unfortunately, we have two parties who are at odds. The Democrats would be for buying the machines. Republicans would like to come close to reduction of precincts. It's coming before you with sort of a, as best we can get it, a compromise on those two issues. And we've worked long and hard to get to this stage. But you have to know, they're tethered. There's no doubt about it.
And I'm just, you know, and I don't want to be critical-
Yeah.
But historically, when there's been a change of a voting location, we do our best effort to educate people, but then there's that inevitable group of people that still go to their own precinct, or their own voting location, and they're told it's the wrong one, or, God forbid, it's no longer a voting location, and they get upset, and they don't vote, or they scream and holler, or we get the emails, or the letters to the council office, you know? As much as we've tried to educate people, and I don't even know, you know, what the best method of doing that is anymore, but I mean, we're talking about a pretty drastic shift, and I just want to make sure that we're all confident that we're, we're gonna be able to educate them at all times.
At least we're gonna have advance notice to do it. If the last election in 2016, it was the last election, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the Nazarene Church said no more, right? We didn't know ahead of time that they were gonna say they weren't gonna host an election site. We had no notice at all. So then we had to scramble to consolidate that with the manual notice.
What was your, while there was studying?
Right.
You're always gonna gather equipment, new equipment. When there's an election in Illinois, our phones don't stop. I'm at my polling location, nobody's here. What do you mean, nobody's here? No, I'm on the phone, nobody's here. I seen it on the news. You're watching Illinois news. We don't have elections in Indiana. We will never be one under-
Okay, but, okay, but, okay, but we're talking about a major shift here. We're not talking about that. We're talking about a major shift in the voting locations. I just want to make sure that we're not talking about changing one voting location to this one.
We always have. We send out letters. Always done.
And yet, and yet, but this is a ma, this is probably the most major voting shift that we've done. We can't deny that. And I'm asking, and I don't care about-
And they're not in stone, they might go down instead.
You mean, the list?
Yeah, they're not in stone, it's something that you're out there.
So, wait, it might go down to 10?
No.
I don't know that yet.
10, wow, no.
There's a statement in the House that says they can go to vote centers. Vote center is one for every 10,000 voters. We have 110,000 voters in Porter County.
Yeah, but she just said, when she's, her and Sunday are done going out there.
That's her saying that if they go in there and they can't find anything Wi-Fi or anything like this, it might go down or something like that. And if it does, we're not gonna do it.
Oh.
I'll tell you guys right now, 46 is where we're at. I'm asking you to look at this realistically and logically. And we, as politicians, it's our job to notify these voters, the precinct people. You run the precinct commitment, Dan?
Yep.
You should. And then your people know.
Well, I have a precinct-
They close that voting drive.
I have a precinct committee person that supports me, so maybe I want to, maybe I won't.
I went out there and notified my voters.
All right, all right. So let's hold up, let's take, yes.
No, the question, no, 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 the question isn't just new equipment. That's not just the question, guys.
They're tied together.
They're tied together, and I get it, and maybe it all makes poetic sense. All I'm asking for is for information to see if it makes sense to me. I mean, I'm not asking for the world here. We have an election in three months, and I want to know if it makes sense to me. Is that so crazy? Is that so crazy to want to know if this makes sense to us? I, I get, I understand, you know, there's differing bodies here that want things, we all agree, we probably need new equipment, I get all that. I just want, I just got handed something that's cutting our voting locations nearly in half, and I'm asking, do we have the time? Do we have the things in place realistically to educate our voters? Can we, and I get it that we, as politicians, have some responsibility to educate our voters, but come on, man, we can't get them to the polls on election day! And we're gonna somehow educate all of them on where to go, if we can get them there? I want to make sure that we have things in place, and that it's realistic for us to do this, not for me, not because I'm gonna be on the ballot, none of that stuff. Our voters have a right to have access to the polls, they have a right to be informed where to go, and I want to make sure it makes sense to them. I want to make sure there's that adequate knowledge of where to go. That's all. I'm not asking for the world. Come on!
I agree. So, others, me, you just told us, there's 48 here on this?
Forty-six.
Forty-six. But you said it couldn't go to 10?
No.
No, we're like, just move that out there.
Well, that, that was a very scary remark.
No.
Because we, and I agree with you, we need to get this out to people to let them know. Is this gonna change that much?
Why, you're telling us, you feel comfortable that you have, no, I'm not done. You feel comfortable that with this major shift in the voting locations, you've got some ideas or plans in place, understanding, Jeff, that we have our obligation to fulfill. But from your perspective, the election board, that you have some plans in place that you think realistically will give us our best shot of educating our voters on the most major voting shift in the history of this county, probably.
Like you said, it'll give us our best shot. We're gonna set aside the funds to do mailers, you know, the radio, advertise the newspaper, Facebook, websites, we're gonna do everything we can to put it out there to make it as available as possible. That's all we can do. I can't, you know, I can't do it anymore than that.
Yeah, you can't do it.
I mean, we hit every media outlet we can, and-
It's a tight timeline. It's, I'll call it a tight timeline, but maybe this is the election to do it, I don't know.
Why did it have to go to 46? Why couldn't it be incremental? I mean, why, why were the Republicans so dead set?
Kathy worked on the list.
On the consolidation.
We mapped out all of the locations on precinct map, okay? Right?
Well, I'm just going off of Jay's, now, yeah.
I know, but that's not, we mapped out all of the locations, not quite some of them, like you said, Portage One, Chapel Church, only had 600 voters. Yes, that only had 600 voters, but there's no central location with other voting locations around them to-
And then I counted line rows. We made them travel further. And try to combine, Sunday and I tried to keep them within, what, 5 mile radius?
We tried to consolidate the locations, like you said, you drive four blocks and there's seven locations, there's no reason for that. So we're trying to consolidate locations. We are moving churches, they don't have time for us.
Sunday, what's your timeline? Can you just tell me, and I mean this the best possible, your timeline on getting back, so you're going back out, you're gonna look at these locations?
We're starting tomorrow morning.
What do you, when do you think you'll be done? When do you think it'll be done?
We're hoping, we're gonna start, go hard for the next week.
She doesn't need the mic, I hear her.
We're hoping it within two weeks, we can get some more people down to that precinct.
When are the commissioners meeting next?
The 30th. And almost all of those precincts are locations that we had before, there's schools, fire stations, we know that they are-
Yeah, these aren't real locations.
Yeah, we need to set a special-
We have to, we will, but I just want to make sure, we gotta look this through. They told us that they can accommodate those voters, they have all been reached out to, so it's just mostly the precincts.
That's what I'm saying. Thirty of them will have them come back.
Yeah. Okay.
So it wasn't just, we didn't just ramp five of them and say, okay, we like-
So you're not, yeah, you're not getting, and you're not getting, listen, you're not getting, you're not getting pushback from this board, you understand? It doesn't sound like the notion of buying new equipment. You're not getting that from us. I don't want, I don't want anybody, I don't want to read on Facebook or hear anything that's against new equipment. Because that's not what we're saying. We're saying that we were handed a ball that was tethered to another ball, and we have to make sure that they both make sense. That's it. That's what I'm saying. So, I don't want you to leave here with my, my manifest, or my, my long-winded speech that I'm against equipment, because I don't think anybody here is. But you handed it to us, tethered together, and by golly, we're gonna look at both. The end.
Out of the 100, and what is it, 125,000 voters that we have, we moved 38,000. So, I mean, there's still a big majority of the voters that have not even been moved or touched. And out of that 38,000, like you said, that turned out on that, 38%.
Yeah, I mean, that's a big, that's a big question. Yeah, so maybe that'll be, what I'd like, I'd like to get that information. I'd like to look it over, this is just for me, I'm not speaking for anybody else. I'd like to just take some time, and I know, Jeremy, you've already started looking at your district a little bit. I'd like to get a better handle on this, make sure it makes sense to me personally, and then go from there.
And you'll have, we'll, we'll all have that opportunity prior to actually voting on it.
There's one of us that don't believe, and don't think that you guys need the equipment. I said, there's not one of us that doesn't believe that you guys need the equipment. It just is. There just, there just is no knowledge on the other side of that, and that's the problem.
That's right. Sorry, Jim.
That's right. Okay. Thanks. All right. So, are you guys going for the commissioners on the 30th? Is that your plan?